Hello, William O'Goota here. Allow me to present to you Professor Jennifer Willifield, who will be highlighting the importance of tax planning post and pre-retirement. Thank you.
I'm sorry, this is not going to be so interesting as your previous talk. I agree with all that, but I'm afraid realities are realities, so I have to tell you about a few things. I'm going to gloss through some of these slides and I'll try to sort of, in this talk, make things more easily understood. Tax is my passion, so I'm afraid I have a problem retiring from it. Just to briefly look, and I'm sure that Dave dealt with this already, so I won't dwell on it, is to know what you have in the fund. And while you're employed, you have your retirement savings and you have the six times the deemed pension amount life cover. Now, when you retire, if you haven't died by that time, that cover ends at that point. You can only have that advantage, well, I'm not sure if it's an advantage, prior to retirement. Once you're retired, that is no longer there. What is, that is what is in the fund. What is outside the fund is, once again, while you're employed, there's the other disability cover policy. And also, on retirement, that ends. So if you want to take out separate cover on your own back, that you may do. All right, now, just to look at, because this is not really about planning your estate at the end. You'll have a lecture on that a bit later this afternoon, so I'm not going to go into that. But just to look at what your options are, also remembering that you don't have many options at this point in time. If you'd come to this seminar maybe, you know, a couple of years, many years ago, you might have had more options. But I think also you need to know what's available, because you're going to get financial advisors and people telling you what to do. And I believe you need to have quite a bit of knowledge yourself to make an informed decision. So what are the options that you have? Sorry, go back. You can take all your savings as a lump sum. So for the fund that we in currently, you can take everything out as cash and you can run if you like. You can take a partial lump sum and the rest you can take as a pension. As soon as you take your money out, that ends the fund's responsibility. You're on your own then with that money. And that is the big question and the big problem, is what you do with it. You can take a pension or a living annuity from the fund can be taken. And there again, you're going to take some advice on that. Because if you take the last option, the living annuity, you can draw down whatever you want to, but it's got to be within 2.5% and 17.5% of your amount. Now, I'll show you some sums just now, very simple calculations, not actuarial valuations, which could just sort of jog your mind into seeing whether you're being realistic with what you want to draw down. And don't ever think you can draw down what you're earning now with the salary that you're earning. That's not going to happen. Because obviously, if you're going to draw down the max, your maximum amount, your monies aren't going to last. Because if I take that average, you're all about 65, you've got 15 years' life expectancy left. But you need to look at, I mean, my grandmother lived to 100 and my great-grandmother to 102. So I think my life expectancy may be longer than 15 years. So you need to consider that kind of thing. All right, just a little bit on the future of retirement benefits, because it's all going to be changing. And just so that you know what's basically going to happen. I think the law will still change before this is actually implemented. But basically, what's going to happen is the fund that we have now, which is a provident fund, you can take all your cash out. You're not going to be able to do that anymore with any fund. So it will change. Now, what they've done, and we did do quite a lot of lobbying for this, is that on, in January 2015, if you're 55 or older, you will be protected and you still won't be able to take out your 100%. So they've had to do that, because our expectation in this fund has always been that you could take out 100%. So there will be some protection. Those of you who have a transfer value right at the beginning where this fund started will know that that piece was protected. They'll have another piece coming along. Then the provident fund is going to change slightly and will operate like a retirement annuity fund or like a pension fund, which basically means you can only take out a third in cash at, when the fund matures, and the balance has to be in the form of annuity. So you have limited options. And I think the whole principle behind this is that South Africa is certainly not a country of savers. We spend our money, we're big spenders. All right, now, I just want to show you the effects of some options, because I think if I illustrate it, and I'll try and end my talk a little bit earlier, because I believe there are some questions from earlier. And I think it's always better with questions, you know, I can explain things a bit further. So let's just take an example of Professor A retires. And I'll show you just now people retiring with a lot less money as well. Because I think it's quite, we think that if you've been in a place for a long time, you know, you're going to have a big retirement lump sum. It's not always the case. Also, people have not been in those positions for long enough to build up a large amount of savings. So let's just say this person is 5 million and 750,000 of that was from the former AIPF, which is protected, which means it's tax-free. And no additional contributions. And now there are three options facing Professor A. So firstly, he can take the full amount as a lump sum, because he's allowed to at this point and up to January 2015. So we've got a window here. Second option takes 1250, or 1.2 million as a lump sum and the remaining balance to fund a living annuity. And a third option, take the full amount in fund to buy a life annuity from an insurer. All right, now, certainly with those options, there are actuarial valuations for, if you want to take annuities, that the fund will help you with. And so I'm not going to go that route at all. I'm going to make it a lot simpler than that. Okay, so let's just take a lump sum of 5 million. Now, first thing you need to know, and you can trust me here that I've worked it out correctly, it carries 1.2 million of tax. All right, so you take out your lump sum, cash, you're going to pay tax. Even in this case, where there is quite a large fund. So 1.2 million tax. The 750 from the previous fund is tax-free. And according to the retirement fund tables, the first 500,000 of your lump sum is tax-free. So even taking those two amounts as being tax-free, the remaining 3.7 million carries the tax. So I've calculated the tax on that, which was 1.2 million. That amount that you've got left, 3.7, sorry, 3.7 remains after the tax and that must fund your retirement. So you can see, you don't have 5 million anymore. It's only 3.7 million. So you have to be, face reality and realize what it is that you have. Taking the full amount, in this case, the fund has no further liability in this regard. All right, let's look at option B. The lump sum taken, 1.2 million, is totally tax-free. So that cash, you can take, invest it somewhere else. I would advise and not spend it. Invest it at a good return. And so that will be tax-free at that point. Because it's the 750 from the previous fund. It's the 500 that's tax-free in terms of the tables. Now, you then take a living and annuity from then on with a balance or an annuity. And let's say you draw down 17,000 rand a month as a living annuity and you've got no other income. The tax, this tax of 1.5, 1,578, on that amount each month that comes off. So you're left with a monthly income of 15,422. So please remember that annuity amounts that you receive are taxable and a tax will be taken off monthly. The savings in the fund that you've left there will grow with the investment return, which is great. And as I said before, you can only draw down between 2.5 and 17.5%. The trustees may put a limit on that, because 17.5 might not be prudent at all. So that would be limited. It changes the dynamics of what you want to do a little bit if you look at this scenario. Option C, and I'll come back to some of these options again. The full amount is taken to buy a life annuity from an insurer. There's no immediate tax effect in a situation like that. So there's no tax effect. And you, all your money has gone to buy this annuity for the future and you will get an annuity amount each month. And a portion of that will be tax-free, representing the capital returned on your investment that you've made. So each payment will have a portion that's tax-free. And as you might know already, life annuities come with certain options. You know, there's growth, there's, you know, looking at life expectancy. So there you need some advice, what suits your situation. And I've put their financial advice must be obtained. So it's of a critical importance. All right, so just to go on a bit with the same kind of theme, is that not everybody has a large fund. So let's just look at smaller funds. And the reason of a smaller fund could be short periods of service or you moved around a bit. Or, you know, it's just that, you know, salary scales are different. So let's just look at a small fund. And I'm going to look, assume a fund of 1 million or 800,000. And then I can give you one that's even smaller if you like. And I'll look at the same options. Take it all as cash or buy a pension with a full amount or get a living annuity from the fund. Now, I'm going to illustrate them very simply and actuaries will probably cringe at my calculations. But I think the answers that they get might be better always, but I want to give worst-case scenarios. So first one, take it in cash. On the 1 million, there's going to be tax of 117,000. On 800,000, there's tax of 63,000. So I'm afraid the tax does come into play. If you took only, if you had only 300,000, the tax actually would be nil, because it's below the 500,000. I'll show you a table just now. 500,000 is tax-free. You've got cash available there in the first scenario, 83,000. And for the other one, 737. Now, if I take, you take your life expectancy. If you look up the tables, it's 15 years if you're 65. It's slightly different for men and women, but I'm just using an average of 15. So take that money that you have now. And I'm not taking the time value of money into account and I'm not taking any growth into account. Just divide it by 15 years, divide it by 12 months and see what you can get monthly. Now, that is an extremely simple calculation, but it should just mentally jog your mind to say, hey, wait a minute. You know, this is all that I can take if I wanted to last for 15 years. Obviously, you can invest it. But, you know, there are risks with investment in that. So it's quite startling. So with 1 million, if you wanted to last for 15 years, you can only draw, you know, you have to only use 4.9 million a month of it. Or in your year, doesn't matter if you're more or less, but you've got to average that out. And you have to be realistic about it. Obviously, if this is a cash investment, you might invest, because I'm not a financial advisor. I can lecture you on investments, but I can't give you financial advice. But, you know, if you invested this in a type of investment that gave you a high return, you could also earn interest. But remember, interest also, there's tax on interest. And you might earn dividend income, but there's a dividends tax on dividends. So don't think those kinds of income streams are as big as you would like. So how you invest the cash, if you're going to take cash, half what you do with it is critical, I would say. Even for people who have other sources of income. You know, why not do the best you can with this amount of money? You've done without it up till now. So use it to the best advantage. If you draw down the 4905 or from whatever investment you have per month, you're not going to be paying any tax on it. So, because it's too low, so it could be tax-free. The thing that you need to worry about is for people who maybe have two pensions. And I've seen this in real life. You might have a pension and your spouse dies and you get the spouse from, the spouse's pension as well, because that's hard with a range. You now have two pensions, which, when you go to the taxman, are added together to determine your tax liability. Which pushes you in a higher tax bracket and you end up paying tax. And unfortunately, they haven't been very kind to the over 65-year-olds as far as medical expenses, contributions are concerned. That has changed. There are now rebates. And the amounts that you're going to be allowed to deduct against this income for medical has been reduced considerably. Just to say now, if we buy a pension, so we buy a pension and we, with our same amount of money, is, there's no immediate tax, as I said earlier, so there's no tax plan. Rough calculation again. Take the money, divide it by the 15 years, you're still going to live. Divide it by 12, you now get 555 per month. Well, you're not getting that, but it's just an estimate. And I'm not taking investment returns into account with that pension that you have. And there's no monthly tax. All right, but there was no tax upfront, as in the previous example. And you can see how these numbers change with whatever number you want to put in there. So you can take your fund, see how much it is and do this simple calculation. And just see, you know, have you got as much as you thought you had to provide? Also, what I need you to know is that when you retire from funds, the amounts that you get tax-free are aggregated for the taxman. So if, for example, you retire this year from the UCT retirement fund, but last year, a RAF retirement annuity matured, which you got tax-free because it was according to the tables. Now, what happens is that fund gets aggregated with this lump sum and you only get 500,000 for the whole of your lifetime as tax-free. So just be careful and keep in mind, if you have retired from other funds in the last couple of years before you retire from this one. Or you might still have future funds and they say to you, don't worry, it's going to be tax-free. Tell them you don't know what you're talking about, because I've already used up my tax-free piece. It's for your liking. All right, a living annuity, I'm just also just doing some numbers here. I looked at a drawdown of 2%, should be 2.5, sorry about that, and 10%. And can you see the difference? If you have a million, it's 2 million per month or 8,000 per month, depending on how much you want to draw. But let me just take that second one there. If you draw down 10% and you've only got a million, now you take that 8333 per month, multiply it by 12 months, because it's monthly, multiply it by the 15 years that you have left. And what do you get? 1.0, nearly 1.5 million. You don't have that money. You don't have enough money to do that. So I'm just trying to illustrate how serious it is with the drawdown, if it's a living annuity, that you have to be really careful of how much you draw down. The same in the second scenario with 800,000. If you draw down 10%, you're also out of pocket. You've only got 1.1 million. Well, it's 1.1 million, you've only got 800,000. So you can't draw down 10% realistically. You know, unless you're going to just draw down as much as you like, live to the nth degree. And I know a very sad story that is actually absolutely true of somebody who was not going to reduce their lifestyle in retirement and was going to live as before. And when it's over, then, you know, that's over. And they did that. So he shot himself when the money ran out. I mean, that is just... Brave, no, no. No, I don't think it's brave at all. I think it's extremely inconsiderate of people around him. You know, have to live with it. I don't know. Anyway, we won't go to the psychological side of this. I'm not in that position, so it's hard to judge. I don't believe we should judge. If you take 5% per month in this simple scenario, you would break even, you know, and you'd be okay. So hopefully, in cases like this, and I think living annuities are really for people who have other kinds or sources of income. Rental income or whatnot. What is not a bad thing to do is to downscale your big house, because you really don't need that big house on the maintenance anymore. And rather downscale to something smaller and maybe you could buy a property you could rent out. You know, and rentals can be an income stream. You know, as Alan suggested, other ways of being creative about things. Also, just on divorce. Divorce orders nowadays can include pension benefits. And the tax treatment of those sort of follows what you do. So if it is passed on to the other spouse, it depends what that other spouse does with it. They could also leave it in the fund. They could have it as a pension or they could take a lump sum. And of course, once again, every time you take cash, SARS wants their piece of it, because they don't want you to take out cash. So there again, for the spouse, the portion taken out. But nowadays, what happens, which was unlike the past, is the spouse who's receiving this amount from the other spouse will pay the tax themselves on that particular amount if they take out the lump sum. Which I think is fair enough. So it depends what you do. Just to show you retirement versus withdrawal. And I'm not sure the withdrawal really should concern you, because even if you resign and you are old enough, I think we would all have enough sense to convert that to retirement. Because if you look at the withdrawal table, the one at the top, only the first 25,000 is tax exempt. So for people who are wanting to resign before retirement, bad news, very bad news, unless you are old enough where you can qualify for the retirement table. So it's really not good news. For the ordinary retirement table, as I've been saying, the first 500,000 is tax exempt. So if your lump sum is 500,000 or less, you can take it all as cash and you won't pay any tax on it. But remember the consequences of what you do with that 500,000. It is serious. And the scale goes 18%, 27% and 36%. So this doesn't follow the normal tax tables. However, if you take an annuity, an annuity that you receive from a fund follows the normal tax tables. It doesn't follow this. This table is only for lump sums that come out of funds at any given time. And remember what I said earlier, this is an aggregation. So if you had a fund last year retired from, you could add that together to see if you could get the 500,000 exemption and it could put you into the higher bracket. So, and there's some funny calculations there, but you need to just be aware of that. So withdrawal is never advantageous. All right, just some questions I want to put to you is, where will you retire? Will it be in South Africa or will it be outside South Africa? Now, there are tax effects if you leave South Africa. And there are things called exit taxes as far as your assets are concerned. So those need to be considered. Do you have dependents? Should you pre-decease your dependents, you know, what happens there? Do you have debts still owing? And that, I find, is a scary thing. Is that, you know, that could affect your retirement choice. You know, understandably, if you've got huge debt when you retire, you know, you need to get rid of that debt, because it's like a noose around your neck, I would say. I believe that debts should always be paid. It's just not helpful to have that hanging around. So it might force you into a different decision, unfortunately. But then that is what your circumstances are. And, sorry, just to go back. Have you ever previously withdrawn from a fund? So that information, when you're discussing with financial planners or you're getting advice, is, they need to know that information, because your tax is going to change depending on how many funds you have. And your tax could be higher. Then lastly, is, tax, sorry, you're going the wrong way now. Tax isn't the only consideration for your retirement. And you've heard a lot already and you probably still will be hearing quite a bit. It is not the only reason of how you take your money. You need to actually look at it holistically. You must look at your circumstances. Everybody's circumstance is different. So what suits you might not suit me. You know, it might not suit the person next to you. So you need to be worried about that. The amount must last your retired life. And what about if you live too long? You know, that possibility does exist. Nowadays, we are living longer with medical technology improving. And then, if you take a lump sum, consider reinvesting the amount for an additional income stream. So even if you have other money, if you're going to take the cash in that, reinvest it in some pretty, not too risky investment, that you can, it can grow. You know, as opposed to taking your money and putting it under your mattress, where it doesn't grow at all. Provided you've paid your debts. I do know of cases where people have realized assets to pay off debt, but hated SARS with such a passion, they never paid the SARS debt. So, you know, that's a bad way to go, because you're going to sit in jail at some stage or other. I think it's probably the first one you need to pay. All right, and then lastly, seek financial advice. Because, you know, I'm giving you a very simple kind of overview of the tax implications and that. But I know when it comes to the nuts and bolts, you want to know exactly what it is in your particular case. So you need to do that. So, are there any questions? Yes?
Like most people, I've had more than one job in my life. I've only joined UCT about five years ago. What you mentioned there, if you have previously withdrawn or withdrawn from a fund, it affects the tax rate at a time next year. How far back does that go?
It is now only a couple of years, because it, and I'm not sure of the date, because we had a different kind of a formula. We didn't have these tables. There was a complicated formula that was used when you retired. And it was just too difficult to say how much tax did you pay then and compare it to now. So there is a point at which that it was just cut off and they would only look at the last couple of years. I don't know if it's as much as five years. We'd have to check on that. But it's when this regime came in that they cut it off and only from then on would you aggregate these funds. It was just too complicated to look further back. Well, I do have it in my act and that, so I maybe should pass it through to the fund. 2009, 2009. Then you should be okay. Any other, yes?
Excuse me, could you repeat the question you are answering? We've only heard your answer.
All right, the question was that somebody who's only been at UCT for five years, and it's not... somebody who's only been at U C T for five years and is now retiring and in the last five years retired from another uh a position and got a lump sum. And how far back do they aggregate? And we now have the answer, it's two thousand and nine. So if you retired from a fund prior to that, it probably, it would be ignored. And it it might have been treated as resignation in any event and prior to that time. Okay? Any other questions? Yeah?
So I had a question earlier, which is the converse of that. Um there's five hundred thousand tax-free, which for certain reasons you may not want to take at retirement. SARS currently adds everything into one pool. If you don't take it all, can you use the unused portion in two years' time? When another policy may pay out.
Yes, because say you take out cash of four hundred thousand, it will be tax-free because it's under the five hundred thousand. So next time you take out a million, they're going to deduct uh, they're going to take a million plus the four hundred thousand and then look at the tables of that five hundred is exempt. And the problem is there is a deduction for the tax previ- previously paid. But in this particular case, there's no tax previously paid, because it was not. So there's some kind of adjustment, but yes, that's that's how it would be.
Wouldn't it be any benefit, not a benefit in terms of the five hundred, only it was three hundred and fifteen just a couple of years ago?
Yes.
If it happened to go up to six fifty, would you, and you did it in two years' time, would you qualify for the six fifty or the five hundred?
You would qualify for whatever, uh if it's the six fifty at the, in the year that you retire. So if you delayed your retirement from that fund to that date, you would get the six fifty. Yes. I have to do that.
Sorry, that that's contradicting what was told earlier.
No. Uh oh, I don't know what was told earlier.
The same question was asked. If we left, if we were to take, I didn't ask it, somebody else who ever asked it. But my memory was, is that somebody asked, if I were to to take three hundred thousand and leave two hundred thousand, could I take the other two hundred thousand and be able to benefit from the tax benefit? The answer was no.
No, you can, because it's aggregated. Two different funds, so the fund might restrict you, but the tax doesn't restrict you. So we must just be careful if you're talking what you can take out of the fund as opposed to what you get from all funds wherever and what the taxman says. So that that is what's aggregated. Okay? Yes?
Tenma, there was another question asked earlier by Yang about who is responsible for recording the tax-free and the non-tax-free um amounts. So for instance, if you take out your maximum amount lump sum and put it into a life annuity, which was a voluntary life annuity, who is responsible for recording the tax on the non-voluntary pension that you're paying and the voluntary pension that you're paying, because we treat it differently?
Yes, I think the the where you invest it in, they're usually quite good about that and do the the calculations, like you you could have, if you're buying annuity, there's a tax-free portion. And on your I P file, you will see it's it's separated out. This is, it's got different codes. This is taxable, this isn't. But having said that, if it's a more loose kind of arrangement that you've been through, I would suggest you always keep that information in case uh it's not, doesn't get transmitted to SARS.
And does SARS manage to reconcile these two waters?
Not always. No. So uh I would say what I have seen, it's like when you have contributions, which we don't have in this fund, uh or contributions to your retirement annuity, for example, that's in excess of the fifteen percent that we have. You will see it is recorded on your tax assessment. It it's a running, so they've become better at doing this. But still, things can go wrong. But I I think also with the change in the dispensation now, I would hope that the systems are going to be a lot improved in this area, because now there's a lot of more recording that's going to have to take place. Any other questions? Yes?
Yeah, um you talked about, uh my guess is the answer is no, but let's you talked about retiring from the fund. And while I don't like phrasing, we are being, we're living phrased the way I do like it. We are being retired by the university. Um so the question is, can one be retired by the university and remain a member of the fund, not with a life annuity, remain a member of the fund? In other words, not retire from the fund until sometime into the future, if one had the resources to do that?
I I don't think the fund and the fund people will have to check this out. I don't believe that you could continue contributing to the fund. There is some clauses, and I think we looked at it a little while back, we looked at the fund. And I think you retire from the fund, you cannot contribute from U C T. There's a, there's a link, you can't contribute to the fund anymore. It can be a deferred pension, they can leave the money lying there, but you can't contribute anymore.
And if you're a deferred pensioner, can you then delay your 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 tax 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 to that to run out?
Yes, yes, because you're deferring it until you make a decision what you want to do.
You can only defer until the age of sixty-five.
That's right, that's right. It's more for younger people, not for us old people. So our choices, haha, you don't want to know. It's not enough for us, the people who actually are going to be retired. So um
So the answer is no.
No. Cannot uh carry on contributing. Um I just had a, there was a question posed, and I don't know if you've got it in your booklets. Did you all get these booklets? No. Um there was a question somebody wanted answered, how one can plan for estate duty? And you don't want to get me going on estate duty, because hobby horse, I'm trying to get it abolished. In fact, we this morning sent off a huge lobbying thing to the Davis Committee again. We've done lots of this, so let's see what happens there. But um what policies that U C T can can be converted to this effect? Um I'm not sure there are any policies, except the income continuation, which does not affect a s- estate duty, because it, that is a policy which covers you for not earning your income. If you, it's not a life policy as such. So uh I I can't see that this uh you could do anything. Um if you take cash from the fund, invest these in other investment vehicles uh like shares or property, then all those assets will form part of your estate. Alright, so those will be valued for estate duty purposes and for capital gain tax purposes. And I have to say this, because on death is a disposal for capital gain tax and all those assets are subject to capital gain tax in your last tax return. And you're going to pay estate duty. The estate duty nowadays, you're going to find is quite a little. Um this is uh not really the concern, it's the capital gain tax that should be your concern. So if you have an advisor about estate duty, say, sorry, sorry, I want to know about the capital gain tax effect, because that's the big deal. Um uh you you should know this, but I'm going to tell you anyway. Anything you leave to your spouse, and spouse has got quite a wide defin- definition, could be a life partner, et cetera, et cetera, is a deduction, alright, so it's for estate duty purposes. It's not, anything goes to spouse, it's then not taxed. For capital gains tax purposes, it's a rollover. So it's not a rollover at market value, it's a rollover to original cost. So you end up then giving your spouse the problem of having a huge gain. Uh so just for a member about that. Um so the real problems are the gains.
The spouse places the problem where? The spouse is a state or the spouse?
The spouse, the spouse, when the spouse disposes of their property anywhere, or on her or his debt. Or unless they marry again and do the same. Yes, yes, and I'm sure you're going to hear about that in our next uh speaker. Um why do they, just another question was sent in, why they say, I feel like it's on radio. When they say husband and wife should have separate wills, even though they are married in community property, um the answer to that is that they're keeping assets that excluded from the community and property marriage and you think everything's fine, but it's not. What happens to those assets? So you need to find that out. And um more importantly, very important, and I'm not doing the lecture on wills and that, but I have to get my word in. If you're married in community or have a joint will, which is not the way you should have your situation and one spouse dies in that situation, immediately you need to make a new will. Because that will only protects what you had then in community. What happens now is that the surviving spouse inherits the half of the deceased spouse and could do what they like with it. So if you don't make a will at that point, because maybe circumstances have changed, and I've seen this, where it's gone in terms of the original will and things have changed drastically. So remember, if you've got a community property will and one spouse dies, you need to make a new will immediately for this piece now that you own totally. You know, you might not be able to hold the piece that you had in community, that must uh go through the normal course. Alright, so those were just some questions. Okay?